All right, we're gonna call it work, um, keep things moving. It's uh six thirty one P M um. The Crafton Borough Planning Commission regular meeting for October twenty eighth, just before Halloween, six thirty P M. Um, adjacent to council chambers because of uh Zoom reconfiguration. Thank you for everybody online and here in person for being accommodated to our. Cozy accommodations. Um, so we're called order and we're gonna have a roll call. Uh Val Shep is here. Rihanna?
Here.
Megan is not here. A J?
Here.
And Al? Okay. Uh, we have uh meeting minutes from nine twenty three. I don't think there was anything that I disagreed with. I know that uh there were. Did somebody have a question? I think somebody had a question about it. Um, on the. I don't, there's, there's something on here that, if that one is, I mean, I will motion to approve. Second, okay, um, all in favor? Okay, um, the trails near, near my heart. Oh, we're gonna skip over the public comments, sorry. Uh, public comment. Um, so before the meeting, you can comment on anything that's on the agenda for tonight. After the meeting, at the end of the meeting, there'll be an opportunity to comment on any sort of things that you wanna bring up. The rules of order we ask for is neighborly conduct, um, specifically, you're limited to three minutes. Please refrain from personal tactics. Um, so with that in mind, um, let's start online. If there's anyone online that has a comment on tonight's agenda. Just hit the yellow button or the raise hand button. Okay, and then we'll move to in chambers. Anyone have a comment on agenda items this evening?
Should I speak?
Can we get your name for the record?
Charlie and Frankie. I voted for number one, but. But, but I had it, um, objections to certain things, and I put it in the. Uh, questionnaire. My question was, uh, concern is bike racks block the sidewalks. Sidewalks aren't that wide. Um, you want just in traffic, but. How that we, I think we need to find another place for bike racks. And also, the sidewalk in front of uh the restaurant already blocks the handicap people. With their walkers and they have to go to the street to get around that. So you're, you're kinda making it nicer, putting lights up and everything. They're gonna have even more people out there.
In what restaurants?
Serpientes. I like the restaurants. So I, I have walked there and I, I've seen people with walkers and have had to go in the street.
I thank you for your comment, um, so noted. Uh, I'll add that um, anything that's done is going to be done um, in consultation and collaboration. With the borough engineer. Uh, the borough engineer makes sure that those sorts of things are um. Uh, things that are installed are in compliance with the required widths of sidewalks and whatnot. Um, so you can rest assured that there will be a review from the engineers to address those sorts of things. And there will be plenty of opportunities as that moves forward, a comma. But I will say that that I don't, I don't think that we have a um. We don't have a specific item on that um, tonight, but I think it's, it's, you're certainly, well, this is an informal setting, but I want. Um, so with that in mind, um, are there any other comments on the agenda items this evening? Okay, um, trails. We're getting to the end.
Yeah, there's no real update except that there's a, there'll be a public meeting on the twelfth. So, just from last time, there's been no other action.
And so that's the big thing. So we're coming to the end of it. Um, I think the consultant has done a good job um, um, addressing. Um, what the scope is that we asked him to address. Understand that we have many miles of potential trail. Um, here in town, pointing to the map uh that we have in the room, um, sorry. Specifically along the, the creek. Um, it's not necessarily Crafton's domain. It is significantly um, the Army Corps of Engineers domain. So they don't have an issue necessarily with us walking on their levee. Um, but they do have stipulations. They wanna make sure that we have a plan and that's sort of in place. And that's what this fire is addressing. Um, so I think that um, uh, we're getting to a point with the thirteenth of November. Being a public forum that we encourage anybody, I mean. I'm sorry, let me write that down, so I haven't. Well, uh, there, I probably, yeah, Wednesday goes of counseling with the borough council meeting will be the thirteen. Um, so there's an open forum on Wednesday, the twelfth, um, and it's here in chambers, right, in the, the community room, right? I believe. Yeah, um, we encourage people to come, encourage people to look at, you know, what it is. Um, there's only so many things that we can do. We have C pills, right? Um, we have um. A very much, I have very much um, vested interest over the past twenty years. Um, to get this opened up as really an official opportunity for us to invite people to take part in the nature that we have. Um, the bottom line is, a lot of this stuff, it sounds like kind of unnecessary bureaucracy. Is very much a required thing in order for us to be able to truly promote this as a, an asset, which. In turn raises your property values, um, an asset, um, to build the economic development of our community. To invite people to enjoy the outdoors and to really make a more holistic and better environment at all. So. Uh, with that in mind, um, we'll see you on the twelfth.
Uh, question, so was this complete, is the goal maybe to then like look for grant opportunities or budget? For making the decisions that um, are in plan?
Yes and no. Um, yes, to the extent that we can. Um, if you go back to the parks plan, there's many projects in the parks plan. The dark park is one of them. Um, the trails are one of them, the improvements to Crafton Main and Linden and all of the satellite parks um, are some of them. Um, but there is talk, um, and. We'll see how this goes, um, as recommended by the consultant, that maybe forming a. A satellite organization around the trails, um, could be a.
A what organization?
A satellite organization or a non-frontal organization or some sort of entity.
Don't call it C D C.
Right, for some reason, yes, we look at C D Cs and Crafton as being negative. And I'm not gonna get into the politics of that, because I really don't care. Um, but, um, it is. It is an organization that would try to raise funds to do things, A D A improvements. Um, just accessibility in general, making it easier for people. Maybe it's not all A D A compliant day one. We have lots of streets in Crafton Borough that don't meet the grade compliance for A D A. Um, so our trails may not all meet grade compliance for A D A, but creating a um. A volunteer community, uh, that does the work. I, I think that uh, if anybody's familiar with the Hollow Oak. Um, does a lot of really great work with a lot of parcels here in Western Pennsylvania. I'm gonna have it hiker, um, and. Hollow Oak is a, is an organization, non-frontal organization. They, they kinda, they run some really great trails. Um, and they don't, they don't do anything that is funded by taxes. It's funded by the backs of the people who walk on those trails and ride the bikes on those trails and do this, and so fundraisers and do things. Um, for the, the veteran, the community as a whole. So, something like that. Um, if you have a, an opinion about it, eleven, twelve, um, here. Um, would be, uh, would be a great thing for you to do, to, to have your voice heard, give you some agency about what that might look like. Um, we, we welcome all um, into this, but as a natural next step, my personal agenda is get them open. Get them official, get them promotable, get them so that uh, the work of Mike and, and promoting the economic development of Crafton Borough is an opportunity.
Are you the chair, by the way?
No.
There isn't.
There isn't, no, it's a committee.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So you're speaking from your perspective.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is just, this is just uh, me as a blackfish member saying, hey, um, this is a great opportunity as a community. Uh, this is moving forward. We, we were lucky enough, Wayne Fontana, the people of the state. Um, were able to get us money so we can hire a consultant to look at some of the improvements that need to be made and some of. Some of the problems that need to be solved, um, and uh, create some ideas and gather garner the input. Um, of people like you that, um, you know, behind old Sakai's office down to uh, the busway. Um, Bakers Acres there. There's a lot of opportunity there and there's a lot of great ideas. Uh, there's not necessarily funding tied with doing it. Um, but there's a first step in making a plan and then looking for opportunities, um, and grants and whatnot to uh, to potentially, yeah. Um, get some of that work done as well as maybe creating a group that would um, um, volunteer its time. Um, to make these things actually come into fruition.
I have two, two comments. Uh, one of the things that we're gonna look at for the intern for next summer is helping to launch some sort of continuation of the trails.
Yep.
Call it Trail C D C. You know, Friends of Crafton Trails or whatever, whatever it needs to be called, and get that going. Uh, so that's an option. I need, I need to chat with you. Then number two, Allegheny County just finished their trails. And I think the C is just, there's trails. So connectivity into those trails from Crafton. Whatever that looks like, obviously should be in our plans where, wherever it's possible.
Right.
But from a bigger funding perspective, I mean, there's three great applicants on the application for regional trails.
Right.
So, there's partnerships to be made.
Yeah, there absolutely are.
I would only comment that I was excited that there are eight miles of trails that have potential for our borough, and I think that's really cool.
Yes.
Um, and so the, the degree to which we cannot use money, if not here, if you're here, me, that would be taken away from business development, but find it some other way. Is, I think, very important, but eight miles of trails is a very attractive thing for our neighborhood to have. Or Sandy in today's world that you can find with, so.
I, I tell you, I, you know, I, I personally got Father's Day five K. My kids are older, they can give the rats. The duty about, um, always coming with me anymore, but there are sections that are. It looks like national forests. I mean, there are sections, you know, you see the bald eagles, you see bluebirds, you see the things. Um, that you just wouldn't expect in a glossy urban environment or a, whatever you wanna call our, 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 our sub, the, sub, suburban quasi. Whatever, um, enclave that we are. Um, but the reality is, it's, it's some really great stuff. It's a great opportunity. And, you know, if you don't ever wanna take part in it, I personally will lobby, personal agenda, um, that it's worth supporting. Um, because it will impact your property values, because there are few communities that have the. Natural assets that we do with the creek front access, the undevelopable, you know, flood plain that we have. The wildlife that's there, the, the ability to, um, to really call that as a, as a, as a crown jewel veteran gap, et cetera. Is a, is a great opportunity for us to capitalize on and, and really make something special. So, um, that's where we are with the trails. Questions, comments? Moving on. Okay, uh, business development committee?
Yeah, we're about a day ahead of, but two days, two days ahead of where we'd like to be, because our business development committee regroup meeting is Thursday night. So we haven't had a chance to pull that together. I will say that, um, we tried a lot of things. We have accomplished quite a bit, which we talked about in the last one. Particularly the directory, thanks to the intern, startup kit, thanks to the short house. Uh, and a lot of us made calls and contacts with businesses. We had our second uh, event at the um, Realty Co. In the, in the shopping center, and it was different, but very good. I just wanna say different, we didn't get as many businesses. But we did get a lot of Realtors, which is another very important element to have come, looking at us and talking to us. And so. Kudos to Mike. You got a lot of people here that gave by exposure. Um, we had the, the layouts and maps of some, how to invest. The uh, grant money, um, and a lot of good conversation. We also had the owner of the plaza and the Realtor of the plaza join us for the evening. So, uh, and they said some, they were very, well, with me, maybe not with others, but with me, they were very close mouth about what was coming. But they indicated some very good things were coming, so that's all Claire would say. But, um, I think that is it. Our, our regroup is to say, where do we go now? We said we would launch this committee for a six month period of time. That was now, October's the end of it. So following Thursday night, we'll have an opportunity to say, what should the focus be? Where should we go? How do we go next? Uh, I, I think it is still a priority to keep very active focus on business development as part of the planning commission. How we do that, I think we're gonna carve out and welcome to other people's input on that before we move into plans for next year. With that, again, Mike, anything you would add?
Uh, it was, it was great having the honor of the shopping center at the, at the party. I mean, everybody kinda had their one, one opportunity at their, and I think most everybody to T expressed their opinions about how the shopping center would be approved. Very diplomatically, but obviously, uh, so I think that was productive. And her real estate broker, who is working to fill the space in the shopping center. Is uh, is fantastic, actually. He's uh, obviously there's things he has to keep confidential, but he's very honest about what he thinks is realistic there.
Yep.
Um, and the market potential for, for the shopping center. Those were a great conversations that.
Any other comment on this specifically? Can I, can I?
I would say I have one when you move to the next business development related, when you move.
Oh, yeah, so, so, uh, and it's my tie to, my ask of, of the business development phase. So, um, I'd like to put on the agenda, um, for next month. And we gotta figure out when, yeah, um, we gotta figure out when that is. I would like to put on the agenda some opportunity for us to talk about, um, yeah, it ended, October. But should we extend something?
Yeah, we didn't, that was the intention, was evaluate where we are. We didn't commit to anything past October, but it's evaluated, then determined what we need, how maybe.
Do you think that you will have an opportunity to, to connect, um. Between now and whenever that meeting is with Meg? And just to think, just, not, I don't, I want formal, but just conversational. What, what, what would you two recommend that we do? Is it extend it out six months and continue to let it roll? Are there some specific assets that we need that don't place with the budget? Are there, you know, you know what I mean? Can you think about like what an ask would be to, cause you guys got the ball rolling.
So we got the ball rolling. I think that, I mean, from my perspective, and I'm, you know, I've certainly checked with Megan and Mike as well. To me, business development is for this whole committee to talk about. It's not for some subgroup of us to talk about. We, we took it on to get it moving. And so when we think about, are we gonna have some things we wanna put in there? This should be a, a, a more healthy and in-depth conversation beyond. You know, the, the task force that was designed to jumpstart the process. So, um, I would just encourage us a little bit in a more strategic way.
That's exactly what I'm looking for. It's like, what, what are some things, um, that you would recommend? That we should do as a planning commission to further this in the, you know, into the new year.
I'll, I'll start with one. Can I poke fun? I'm sorry. Can I poke fun at one of the two of you? Just like. Two, twenty twenty six business objectives is missing business development. And so ahead of that, we have dog parks and trails. I'm, would encourage us to get that.
No, that was me.
Well, then I'll, I'll poke fun at you. Okay. Well, I do that all the time, so, alright.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a great thing. It's budget season. Um, the engagement of the business committee. Um, is gonna need some resources. Um, and we need to find a way to really. As a commission to build that into our vernacular, to make that the kind of part of our D N A, because that really is something that planning commission is built to. To, to help facilitate. We now have an employee, um, within the borough who's dedicated full-time to economic development. And that, that, I mean, there's a lot of synergy here that we need to figure out. How do we, how do we harness?
Yeah, and I guess I would just say that, reiterating what I said, just, it really is Mike's to drive. I mean, that's, that's your role, Mike. So we're here to help, um, and we will work together, but like thinking about what we need for next year. Um, from, from my lens is that's a key, a key function. Um, so we can, we can provide all the help and support that we want, but, but that's will be, you know, really need you to help. Help lead us in that area as well. So we'll get the business input, and you know, we'll bring our own perspectives, but.
Yeah.
That I would say.
Well, I was just gonna say, I think you and, you know, Megan's done, we're each updating this off the ground, and you've gotten people, business owners engaged, Realtors engaged. And now, so you've kind of thrown the pilot project, so now it would be easier to go to council, ask for some money to allow. Staff then to like continue that momentum.
Smaller.
So, yeah, you guys can do that, what you did with like no money and mostly, I mean, I know. Yeah, yeah. We, we can do a lot more if it's more, um, I guess like.
Yeah, what I don't wanna ask is Megan, A J to put together, you know, a giant, you know, draft our plan. But like, if you could, maybe Meg and A J and Mike, if you guys could maybe have a conference call. Or something to kinda make a punch list of things that might require some funding, might require some outside resources. I don't want you to say funding. Um, this is time, talent and structure, right? Um, so if you could connect with them, um, to. You know, have a recommendation in the next meeting of maybe what this looks like any within a year. Good deal? I think it's great. Alright, um, anything else on the actual committee? Okay, moving forward to the discussion of twenty twenty six objectives. Um, obviously, um, well. Park. Um, so, no, seriously, I mean, a dog park is something that adds value. We did the trail stuff, uh, we did the, uh, the park plan. And it was overwhelmingly what people want. You may not agree with the dog park personally. I may not agree with the dog park personally, but I will tell you. Um, that people moving here, um, find that as a weakness in our communities. And people who live here with dogs, um, find that as a weakness in the community, because they have to leave to go find one. Uh, and that we have the resources to support one. Um, so.
Yeah, that's a good question. What is our goal in discussing the objectives? Like, what do we wanna come out of this with?
So, so, so some of it is to, is to kinda straw man, what are things that we wanna take up and work on this year? And the homework coming out of tonight is to kinda think about this list. So I'm gonna put F on the list. And I'm gonna put B D committee, right? Um, because that wasn't specifically addressed, but it was kinda part of what was all of number six. Right? So the dog park, the trails, the pedestrian safe, uh, safety, the community gateways, um, other opportunities in the B D committee. Those are the A through F, if you will, on that agenda.
So I guess the question for me would be, and please jump in, it would be, do we, do we have what we need in the dog park? Do we, but the specific things that we wanna include for next year, though, you know?
Yeah, yeah, like we don't use like solution, we're just saying like this.
Quick, quick budget topic.
Yep, there is, there is a potential there, right?
Yes, council has not talked about it during their budget sessions, but there is twenty five thousand dollars for a dog park in the draft budget. But they, they, they. Bency, doggy, can I?
For implementation, so, uh, some context around that, there's a, there's a tear sheet, if you will. If you look at the master park plan. As a series of tear sheets, like, oh, here's a grant, let's use that to apply, right? That, this is the, this is the Ferris wheel. This is the bridge. We don't have a Ferris wheel or a bridge, but you get the idea. One of them is a dog park. The dog park for us to outsource and to build the dog park in the plan. With all the bells and whistles performed by people who were hired to do it all, would be about sixty five thousand dollars. It's a lot of money, but you bring in in-house talent, because we have a, we have staff, we have a public works department. They have a full schedule, um, but if you bring in in-house talent, you put together people who are friends of a Crafton dog park. There's a lot of man-hours there that dissipate and go away. That brings sixty five, that, you know, part of it, if you look at it, there's a beautiful pavilion. Maybe that doesn't have to be phase one, maybe that's a Kickstarter for phase two, et cetera. So six, don't be, don't be scared away by sixty five thousand. But when you do these plans, you have to account for what does it look like in totality, right? Um, when it's all done. And that was a sixty five dollar. So twenty five is a great start. Um, so maybe if that does get approved, maybe one of the things that the planning commission can do. Um, is to help find ways to support the, the, the calling of a group of people who would be the friends of the dog park in Crafton. Um, to put together the Kickstarter campaign for people to contribute to, and maybe it's a matching thing where the twenty five thousand becomes fifty thousand. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Is there a specific plan?
There is a specific plan.
Identify the words to be and.
Yes, there is. Yes, there is.
And so how it needs, so if council then approves.
And that plan is not set in stone. That plan is just what it would look like if that's what it was and what it would take to do.
Would it require more public review and that kind of thing?
Of course it would, yeah. None, none of it's approved. It's all been put together as speculation.
If council then authorizes use of the twenty five thousand, if there's, if there's money available, then, then, then it should proceed.
Yeah, just because they put it into an account that says that we're gonna try and use this for this, if the right opportunity to spend it on this doesn't occur. Then council doesn't need to spend that money. They can roll it in another project.
So it takes council action then to trigger?
All of it would take council action. That's exactly right.
It's part of the budget process.
Yeah, the first council action would be approving that twenty five thousand dollars within the budget.
Incorporating it into the, the twenty six.
Budget is very thin and, as we speak, going through very specific line items, less than twenty five thousand. So, yeah, planning commission would wish to pursue a dog park. I've written formally directing me to propagate that to borough.
And, and, and that's, 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 you know, that's, that's where we are. This is, is there?
Okay, so like, I'd be interested, like, to me, not knowing what other things they're cutting, like, yeah, dog park is, is great, but is that gonna come with the expense of something else? It's not what it, it's not in scope, so, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so a motion that would recommend to, um, um. Um, and I'm able to make the motion, so let, let me do it, and you guys debate whether or not it, um, right. A motion to recommend, um, that council maintains its interest. In keeping the dog park as a priority, um, in the twenty twenty six budget. So long as it doesn't impact mission critical services and operations, um, would be a generally good thing for the. Uh, in alignment with that.
I guess I, my reaction to that would be to say. Might be a better discussion at the end of this.
Yeah.
Right.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm motioning right now. I'm saying, yes, I'm saying that something like that is what we're looking for. Um, coming out of this, is some things that have just general, we think that council should pay attention to. These items to the tune of, um, we noticed that it's in the budget and we, if at all, you know, to protect. So, same thing with the trails.
So we're gonna, that was, so what this dog star and the question was, what do we wanna talk about amongst these items? Let's go through them, then at the end, we can take to show what we need to.
That, that's exac, that's exactly right. Um, the, the dog park was just an example. It's, it's easy to talk about because I'm invested. Um, the trails, um, similarly, um, is there something that we would want to motion to recommend that they do? Um. I'll stop there. I mean, I talked about what's happening in the trails committee right now.
You're on that committee, yes?
Yeah, my, my reaction to that again, um, first of all, consultant will, will present their. Report on the twelfth for public. Report on the twelfth for public comment, which is a good thing. Um, they will identify. Consultant has recommended a series of five priority areas and they tried to to put costs associated with that and also discuss. What it means to operate and maintain those kind of things. My reaction again to try to. My reaction would be to wait to hear what happens at that meeting before we may then therefore make recommendations. And so maybe, like, again, maybe it does or doesn't fit with the council's budget actions, but it seems to me we gotta get hear those public comments. And then weigh in. Sort of against each other as to what what we think are more important. Is business development really our top priority? You know, I sort of personally lean that way only in that we need to do those things to help stabilize the financial condition of the borough. And if that's more important than, say, dog park or trails, then so be it. Um, if there are other opportunities for great and significant volunteer activities that can help further these things that are not, you know. Big money drawers, all that, maybe that needs more discussion. So I don't know. I think my sense though is. Maybe to identify some of these things, see if there's others on what we want to suggest and then come back and then have another discussion, maybe at the next meeting. Would be my suggestion.
Totally agree.
On motion, you mean? Yeah.
Yeah, 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 we have time. Uh, and that's that's why we're talking now, knocked over.
Right.
Um, and that's where I want everyone to kind of think about these things and others. So that when we come back, we can make a formal motion in in the November meeting.
Yeah, when it's council, by the way, have to take the action on their budget by the end of the year.
By the end of the year, yeah.
How many?
About one more meeting essentially.
Yeah.
A little bit behind. We had a discussion a couple of months ago, might be more better input, but it is what it is.
Well, I mean, we weren't really. At that point anyway. I mean, the consultant is just kind of landing the plane on their plan right now. So I think it's a little too soon to tell to say. There's a specific ask, but I think between now and because our next meeting will be after this, we'll hear. Your feedback, public comment, that sort of thing, at least in its early inception phase um by that point, so that we can think about, you know. Look, I will tell you, um, the Crafton Borough doesn't have a million bucks sinking a trail next year, right? Um, but maybe there's something that is to the tune of, you know, we appreciate, um, we appreciate the 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 light that's been shined on us and don't lose focus on it. Because there's been, you know, there seems to be support and growing awareness of what it can be. Something like that might be all that we're saying. Um, pedestrian safety is um is something I put on here because um it shocked me talking to a tow truck driver. Um, about how many crashes there are at the same locations every damn day. Sorry for the curse word. Every single day.
Man, why is this new data from what you presented last time or is it the same example?
No, well, it's actually it's a it's an add-on to that example.
Implementation?
No, um, there there are there are a handful of locations um that seem to be continuously happening. Um, and. My anecdote from the last meeting was listening to two Crafton police officers talk about they should do something about these intersections. I think that I'm that. I think that we are that. I think that, you know, a first step there um is to understand. If this is happening on a frequent, almost predictable basis, maybe there are things that. There's data, there's information. I mean, if there's a database that the state manages, there's insurance companies that manage and stuff. There's a lot of information about this, but I don't know of any sort of a pedestrian safety report that we've ever done. And I don't know that, um, that's not an accusation. That's just a, you know, maybe it's time that we think about.
You said you saw about tow truck drivers and talk about crashes, does that?
Car car crashes and and people being hit.
Okay, we.
Yeah.
One of the specifics, I guess. Do we know them? Is there such a thing? Maybe that.
Doesn't the police, can the police track that? I mean, isn't that not a place where this should be housed and raised versus planning? I'm just trying to see what's.
Well, first of all, actually, there's an accident reporting requirement on the state level.
Yes.
Whether that's happening, whether people fill out the course accurately, there's a whole other question.
I think it is.
But I'm just telling you, I know what that there is such a thing.
Yeah, I think I I think it is, uh, 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 you know, it's it's legally required to happen and insurance companies need that to happen and. Um, what I'm what I'm seeing though is, um, is there any planning that's happening saying that, wow. These three, and I don't know this for sure, but these three or four intersections seem to be constantly happening, right? Can we can we at least look into as a planning commission? Um, can we look into where those places might be? Um, what is the frequency of of what is happening? And then maybe there's an ask of council to look into this, maybe a consultant to the police department, maybe a consultant to the borough. Because this is this impacts thrive, right? I mean, it's both economic development. If we have people losing. Insurance money and and all that sort of thing to wrecks and crashes. It's also it's also a a direct impact on what we want to be as a walkable community if if these things are happening. But just understanding kind of the the greater scope of what it is in the context of the, you know, there's a discrete number of intersections that we have in town.
And what would we do about that?
Make a recommendation.
To who?
To council.
To to do a pedestrian, have a hire a consultant to come and do or do something.
May maybe that's what it is.
Okay, okay. So we we we.
It's gonna start somewhere.
Well, wait, is there any chance that we could get any kind of data before our next meeting that Mike pointed her through whether. We can define the problem a little bit more.
Well, that would be my that would be my ask of it is in the next year, we get a resource from the, because I think they're they they're they're year end. Their agendas are full.
Of course.
Can we can we ask for a little bit of support? Maybe comes in the form of a data savvy intern that can work that state database like a like a slop, right? Um, that can give us some information as to what is happening here. And then we simply look at it and say, you know what? This isn't this isn't this isn't our valley, or you know what? We could slice into this a little bit and at least help move the needle forward.
Well, yes, as we're talking about it, what you just made me think of is if it is public safety, we shouldn't wait. So why not we do something more just in terms of get data now? What what's what's the weight and seek help? I mean, we can. Volunteers, we can, you know, take on something and and try and.
Presumably, the police department is the source of that information.
It it's not. It the police department is the collector of that information. The state is the source of that. They haven't told the truth.
State is not the source, Eric. How it works is the police reports are the source.
Right, and they that they collect it. And they they accumulate it in a state database.
But but it starts with whatever.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't make a request with the police.
You can you can just sort it by zip code and by town.
And all the interest in our data that comes out, why why do we need to have that?
Mike said he could he could ask the police.
I'll chat with the chief.
He went for a right time, my man.
Digitize. We could probably map it.
Like there's so, yeah, there's things we can do, like consider pedestrian safety and things like the downtown improvement. So I definitely think it should be kind of. Part of our objectives. And the other piece of it is kind of outside our scope. It's like, all right, well, we have a, um, we have our own like police force as a borough. I know they do things around like school, um, times, you know, making sure that there. The people are driving carefully, taking people who are not, and we're finding that there are areas where we're seeing people not stopping at stop signs, et cetera. Do like we can work with the police department. They're they're the experts on this. They'll know like what kinds of that, you know, actions they can take. Um, because it's a behavior thing, I think, more than like a physical infrastructure thing. Um, and I think it's a great, you know, anytime we can like work with the police department and. Show more connections between, you know, the community and the police department. I think that's.
And and I'm not I'm not, I'm certainly not shutting down any of that. What I'm saying is all these 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 acts of, of course, is police reports. Are reported to a standardized database. And what that means is we don't have to impose any, you know, an uh, an inquiry onto the police department. When it's actually possible to go to a database and say, can you, can this database give me a report of Crafton over the past. X years? Because all that stuff is well collected and very pristine data. Um, and that could be that could be done very easily by somebody like me, um, that can put together that sort of report, right? But what I'm suggesting is I'm not able to spend probably ten hours that it would take. Um, to do that kind of database work, but an intern from Pitt Carnegie Mellon, Charle, uh, uh, uh. Karla College, whatever, um, Robert Moore, somebody who's working in that is looking for a project. An intern certainly might be really interested in being able to help us um put together what that report is. And that way we don't have to. We don't have to take away any time. The police of police officers are busy, um, the 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 borough office is busy, you know, that sort of a thing. And Mike, you can certainly look into what is available here locally. And then we can maybe look at, you know, what might be an ask, right? Um, for support to put that sort of report for us to look at and see if there's any work for flag commission to be able to do. Okay?
Same.
Yeah, I'm hey, I'm all for it. I'm I'm all for it. I can talk to Mike tomorrow um about what I found from the the state resources that I looked into and we can see what.
If we just prioritize it and not make it be not make it bigger than it needs to be and just get on it, then I think that's base.
Yeah, anyways, like Mike, you're saying you're just gonna talk.
Excuse, I know one answer is to speak. I have just one question. We actually know where these intersections are and nothing's being doubted about it. That's just my question.
I I don't know that everyone knows exactly where the intersections are. I think what we're trying to establish here is um. Um, understanding what that really looks like and not on an anecdote level, but on factual level. Because everybody, everybody's seen something or somebody got hit by a car. Everybody's seen, you know, something terrible that's happened. Um, we're trying to understand this context of what's happening. You know, you're absolutely right. We're gonna rill this down as quickly as possible. And prior to me bringing this up, we have had the thirty years I've lived here for somebody else to bring it up. No one has. So shoot me as the messenger for not getting this done in six days, but I'll tell you, I want to make this a priority for us to get done.
Well, that's what I wanted to hear. It's gonna be a priority.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Try to be dramatic, you know, as soon as I hear. Okay, community gateways. Um, community gateways, can you talk a little bit about what the vision is behind that, Mike?
Uh, Crafton has some gateways, signage, historic looking, we've all seen them.
Do you hold that poll when you come into current?
Right, right. Um, so this is a discussion that actually AJ brought up about several months ago, and there is a lot of value.
Came from a.
Yeah, oh, good. And there is a lot of value to. Putting uh. More, I don't know what to say, bigger, better, older gateways in the town so people know for sure. And you're not gonna miss it that you're in a crack. Forest Hills is fantastic.
Right.
The gateways are amazing. You know you're in Forest Hills and you're grabbing.
Yes, you do.
And I'm not necessarily suggesting that big and bold, but you know, there there's a, there's a whole cottage industry of gateway planning. Into neighborhoods and communities. So it can be, it can scale to however it needs to be. It is expensive. It's expensive. Kind of Crafton won't be so expensive to plan for it, probably an over under a fifty thousand for a plan. And then there's installation. So that's the capital cost. So that's a different conversation. So the plan would include designs, schematics, those sorts of things, locations, obviously.
Automatically, when you say that, I think that um, uh, I, well, in my head, I see a bronze bust of me. Um, when I think about this, I I I really think about um, our our representatives in Harrisburg. And specifically, um, you look at the focus that goes maybe into the east end of the city and the focus that goes into Warrensville and the focus within the city. Um, and you look at um, um, the west side of town, there isn't as much recognition. And I think that you could say that equally about Carnegie. You could say that about Koreopolis. You could say that about Crafton. It seems like um that there might be grant opportunities in the next year to do this sort of thing. Um, maybe a small match or maybe a whole wholesale grant um for us as a community. Is that something that typically happens to get these things moving?
Yeah, there would be a match, but yeah, this is grant food ineligible.
That's great. Okay, so this will be another area for us to think about. Is that a priority? Is that ask how we can support um the application of a grant? Um, for the, you know, Carnegie or, I don't see, I said Carnegie. Crafton's open for business. Crafton is a, you know, welcoming community. You're now in Crafton. Um, maybe not to the extent Forest Hills does it with. Oh, the batters, but you know, um, it's um, it's certainly uh, uh, it's certainly a great time to do it. I know that the heritage. Mission?
So heritage, Crafton Heritage, that's it.
Crafton Heritage.
Another commission, independent.
I remember that that, well, yeah, no, we're independent. I know Crafton Heritage at one point, um, I thought about. Right at the point of Flunberg Bridge, they're having a Crafton gazebo or something like that that was welcome. So there's there's clearly other people are thinking about this.
So when we think about pros and cons of what we have on the list, you know, to me, the fact that we have an absence of a downtown that's clear. We'd make a case for having better gateways to let people know you're here. I mean, other people can kind of find that because all of a sudden the street lights look the same. And all of a sudden, the shopping district right there, we don't have any of that. So, you know, we we think about what are things that would be worth investing in. In my view, that might be something that's on the plus list for us.
And as terrible as Ingram is at everything that they do in terms of implementability, I would hope. No, 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 this is recorded. That's that's for you watching at home, Ingram. You can't do anything, apparently. Uh, my opinion. Well, look, we just did all of this work that they were supposed to be helping us, but they never showed up. Never showed up. I have a I have a big chip on my shoulder, but I would say that that collaborating with Ingram around the the gateway to the the Crafton Ingram piece. Because it's such a connected, you know, the shopping center is such a connected piece of town would be something. Um, that, you know, maybe it's a fool's errand to try and work with them yet again, but I think it would be worth trying to work with them yet again.
I like community gateways as a priority. Makes sense.
Awesome. Any other opportunities that um that that didn't make my shortlist or?
Only question I'd ask is there anything we can do that would help to further the stability of Crafton? And that would potentially have either short or longer term, but more like longer term of impacts on. Our ability to raise revenue. And I think business development is probably the top of the list. Maybe there's other things that I don't know. And you've been thinking about Mike or others that, um, to me, that's the most important thing. It makes us, you know, puts us in a better position to report other things like these things.
And I think if you analyze where we are, our home values are going up. You just know now about that. So that is less of a reason to do something to drive home values up, but our property taxes are not, and we are happy about that. But we have to be able to fund what we need to fund the borough. And so I think that, you know, as we work with priorities, that's how we have to work on them.
I think you, I was chatting with you, you were saying that the 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 borough's complete revenue sources. Increasing at less than a percent a year.
Correct.
I mean, but and costs are, you know, what's the cost of inflation?
Yeah.
A little bit more than.
Three plus percent.
Yeah, whatever it is, we're just constantly, you know, losing ground in serious stuff.
Yes.
There's a collusion about to happen somewhere budget wise.
Correct.
I mean, you just can't keep cutting and and expect to go to the same local service at all. So anyway, I think we can do. Related to economic developer business, so even to me, the most.
Yeah.
Brilliant thing.
Borough council does not want to raise taxes at all. Uh, and the only alternative to not raising taxes is growing the tax base. So it is really one or the other. So.
It's a dangerous thing.
Well, the the third the third terrible uh option is to cut more services.
I was gonna say, a real, a real Achilles heel is to not make new appropriate infrastructure investments just to keep. Steady place or otherwise it'll cause some pain. It'll be really awful to put on, you know, recover some, you know.
I I you you know, I I I think that that, um. There's a there's a tremendous point being made there, and I think that it's worth reiterating. Been ten years, more than ten years, um, is thrive relevance. Now, I think everybody knows that I have an agenda there and I think that it is. Um, but that would be something that, you know, do we feel that the relevance of. Um, but that would be something that, you know, do we feel that the relevance of thrive is still meeting the vision of what planning commission and what we want to promote, um, plan commissions tasks within the community. Economic development, fighting light and walkability.
And I would, it's a better discussion if you want to agent right now.
I, I just think at a high level, sure, if we want to set time to talk about that into the new year, yeah.
I, I would offer the, the, the only issue is prioritization. It's not that it's not. The only issue is prioritization. I think we continue to want to walk the community. And I think we continue to want the things that are in there at the, you know, et cetera, the four key areas. Um, I think we want to continue to get rid of light, raises everybody's property value, but also makes the neighborhood safer. Uh, you know, so I think it's just a matter of prioritization in my mind. I see no reason to reinvent that until we go forward and say, let's measure how far we've come on each of those and then, and then it's about everybody, you know.
Okay.
I'd like an overarching objective. I don't see more, I just like connection with council or updates. Cause I find that, um, okay, I could attend council meetings and I would know what's going on. Well, okay, but here's the thing though, they get a planning commission update, right?
Right.
Like, so I feel like we should know, um, like, for example, there are some things that council talks about that I really should come up to planning commission as well, such as like the tripod within bay. That wasn't anything that was ever discussed at planning mission. And I know that's not anything we would approve necessarily. But it definitely seems in the wheelhouse and, um, so not knowing that that was something coming up, um. Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have like a council update, um, and just, yeah, making sure that we're aware. Especially because, you know, sometimes people like the public might attend a planning commission meeting, not a council meeting, but there's stuff that kind of connects with.
Seek your comments right on the money. To the extent that we don't hear, have regular back and forth regarding what the council priorities are so that we can figure out how to support them or, again, we can offer our own suggestions and see if they become their priorities. Um, but there's a way to have that kind of communication of deal. And make, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure what the mechanism is, but if there's a, if there's a possibility that we end up meeting with the council president periodically to have he or she, you know, just kind of enumerate what those things are and have a discussion about things that might be, they might see as helpful. And there are goals.
And they're, they're.
Be nice to know what that is. To the extent that they're unknown to us.
Unfortunately, there was a council member on there.
Yeah.
I would like to go back to that and build on that though. So for that, the, the, do you want, do you want to comment on that? Yeah, okay. Um, the, so what I, what I, what I don't see on here that I would like to see, and these are things that I brought up at the last two meetings. One of them is going back to what I brought back from the education session from the state about how they're formed. What we should have, do we have bylaws, you know, get clarity on our role? And, and, and we did have, which it had council people on here, and that is not a best practice. So the best practice is that planning commissions are independent of the borough council. However, a connection with an update from them. So, you know, the answer to the update was to put a council person on, on this, which may, that served a purpose, but also is a, is sort of a double edged thing, right? You know, and so we are to be an independent entity, make recommendations to council. And therefore I love the idea, because I mean, I'm really glad you brought it up, that we do feel like we came out of the loop, um, for us and it should. So, um, I would like us to continue to revisit once we get past the budget things. I would like us to get on the January agenda, sort of a formation, sort of just of founding. Do we want to have, do we want, you're supposed to submit a report to the state every year, three weeks. Doesn't have to be a big deal, but we should be reporting to the state. So those are the kinds of things that I would like to still see on the agenda. Haven't bought after the smaller minutes, or at least I missed them. They did. I didn't speak up when I could. So on me.
No, that's great. Uh, bylaws and stick pouring and, um, feeding into, um, connectivity to, um, council objectives, um, what their vision is for planning and how we can align to that vision for planning. Um, priorities of thr- thrive as three points, but what are the three points that we should be prioritizing? Especially through the lens of what, um, the council's thinking. So I think those are, those are, those are well, well made and taken, um, here.
Thing I would say is that it is on us to attend council meetings. I would also say that when council meetings occur twice a month, and one of the, and these incur, occur once a month, but then there's a subcommittee that's once a month, it really, I'm not sure how we.
Yes, no, that's very much understandable. Um, and, uh, you know, maybe we can do a little bit more to talk about, um, um, standing item within our agenda to review what's been topical with the council. You know what I mean? Maybe we can ask for, you know, um, for some, some suggestion there. Um, that would be, I think, certainly possible. So we can have better, again, what, what are, what are action believers we can pull with regards to better connectivity is nice to say, it sounds good. But what are things that we can actually implement that create better connectivity from it? So I think those are, that's great feedback. Um, so with that in mind, uh, we have a jam packed set of twenty twenty six priorities. Aside from kind of the organizational piece, um, specific things, especially involving around, um, resources that we might need to ask to be earmarked, um, to get done. Um, we have A through E here. Um, we didn't have any other opportunities other than the BD committee. So I'm saying there's, there's a one, two, three, four, five things, you know, on this list tangibly. Is there anything else, um, that if there is, what I want to say is if there is anything else that you guys think that are worth thinking about, how can we maybe ask for resource on or whatever? Um, that doesn't mean that we're going to come and talk about only these five things next meeting. But we will talk about these five things with kind of a, is there a motion? Is there an ask or is it good the way it is, right? Um, you know, maybe we realize after the, the twelfth, the meeting of the trails, um, that yeah, it's fine. It's going forward. They, they don't, they don't need us. Um, and we don't need to ask for anything there other than, where do you go, council? Thanks for putting that together. Okay? Yep, yep.
I'm just looking and so there's, there's two things. One is that we did have the list from the minutes from last time, which had business planning priorities. And we could have put the same verbiage in here, I think, and been better covered. Um, because we had discussion of twenty twenty six objectives and here we had, you know, outlined priorities for twenty twenty six. And support for business development committee success was at the top of the list. So we wouldn't have missed that one. But also on here is collaboration.
Well, that was all of number six. I apologize. I've, for bifurcation of six and seven, that's entirely on me for misrepresenting the agenda. I'm, I'm sorry for that.
That's all right. This collaboration with other borough commissions for comprehensive planning. So that was just again, bringing it up, not saying it's priority or not a priority, but it was on the list. And I don't know if that's something we should.
Well, we've been talking about that and that's, that's kind of the better connectivity piece. I don't think of that as council. I think about it as rec board. I think about that as, you know, other civil, there, there, there. There, there are other pieces in place there. Um, but those aren't necessarily at, they're in budget season, right? And so we want to make sure that as they end into November and December, as they end the year with their budget, um, it sure is problematic if you have an ask, um, in February of next year. That's ten thousand dollars. It's a darn good ask that we kind of had in mind. You know, that, that's what I want to get to right now, that we head into next year. There's certain things that we want to earmark and ask for, but that things.
Developmentally, six budget objectives.
Yes. Okay.
Um, the other thing I wanted to just bring up by way of update, it is a really new business because I brought it up last time, but it also was in the minutes. And that is the, um, what we were approached with and I brought it forward last time was the opportunity to do some historic, um, take all the pictures we have of historic representation that are, that right now are in the hands of, um, Chuck Gelati, who has offered to help us. And so since we brought it up last time, Chuck Gelati and Heritage, Crafton Heritage are going to collaborate and we can, um, help sponsor and support that and I'll be happy playing that role. And Susan O'Connell is going to be the lead person as the advisory board member from Heritage. And they are looking at, so the goal, the conversation, just a quick recap was that we have, we have this resource of pictures that we got from the book of Crafton. And if you walk through Green Tree, they have historical plaques that talk about what was on this road when, you know, when Washington came down Green Tree Road and they're just pointed, there's still, we have a lot of that that we could use. And so one other option was we could put some of those on, on the trail. So there was a connection to the trail study and that we could have those on the trail. So they're going to go ahead and figure out what is it? We could put those little medallions on that they use to give you more information if you like it digitally. Um, and what's the cost when you have some pictures? So we don't envision, they're going to come to us with what's their vision, um, sometime over the next month or two.
I, I would strongly encourage, and I think I did mention this last time, is the time and the perceptive and the, the, the planning around that is right now within that eleven, twelve. And I hope that, I really hope that that makes it onto the, kind of, kind of the go forward plan.
But it's not just about trails. I mean, it's about the city. It's about, it's about the community of Crafton Trails is simply one application of it. So, you know, we can mention it there, but they're not going to be ready and we're not going to be ready. But we're planning to see for something for community work on. I mean, perhaps it hits a budget item for the following year. Uh, but at least we can see what we can find.
That's right.
Francis starts doing in that. So I would just like that to be sort of kept track of somewhere in the, in the minutes as a ongoing, ongoing in, initiative.
I, yeah, I really like that idea of support that. Um, and I feel like it fits into not just trails, but community gateways as well. Though I would definitely want to, I, out of all the things that are listed here, um, aside from like pedestrian safety, I feel like that falls under the. You know, entities, but like, we'd love to request some money in the budget to support like community gateways slash trails slash.
Right.
The history of general. Yeah, yeah, even if it's just like a small, like a small amount because, um, you can like, yeah, partner with the other organizations that fundraise.
Well, and there are, there are grant making opportunities. Uh, I don't know if there can set sail on the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary grants were out there. Um, but there are grant making opportunities that do come up around historic preservation and those sorts of things. Um, in tying that to the, to, to thrive, the walkability, uh, development. Um, and, and, and of course, the, um, the, the, the beautification, if not, um, anti light nature of the plan. Um, so I, yeah, I think that there's a lot of opportunity for us to folk, continue to focus on what are those levers that we can bubble up? Right? If we, if we look at things, I look, I look at the traffic piece as one of that. It's not something that anyone's currently dealing with and it sure seems like it's something that everybody should be aware of. And if we look at it and say, hey, this ain't us, but maybe we can make a recommendation out of that. If we look at some of these things and say, you know what, you know, that, that kind of signage and that sort of thing ain't us. Maybe it's somewhere we can, we can, we can say, hey, rec board, you know, this might be a, an avenue for, for, uh, for the rec board to, uh, to dive into park placards and, you know, that sort of thing. But who knows, right? Who knows? Um, so I think that, I think we have a good list. Um, we'll put together, um, some sort of means in the next, in the next meeting to kind of tease out whatever recommendations we want to make, if any, uh, for these. But if there are others, come with that same kind of a, um, uh, mindset and we'll come up with a good, a good initial plan for things that we think we should be, um, centered on next year. And hopefully, um, any budget requests that we need to, to make. Push from there. Okay? Anything else? New business? Anyone?
November meeting schedule.
November meeting schedule.
Regular meeting is Thanksgiving week. Great. Uh, December the second. Do it a week later.
You fine by me?
Hmm?
Fine by me?
And then probably.
It's a Tuesday.
Probably cancel the December regular meeting because that's all.
Yeah, I think we should.
So our, our, when, when does, when does, uh, council actually push through your budget? Not until the second week of December?
Their first regular December meeting will be the fourth. I believe it's fourth, it's the fourth or the eleventh. Prob- probably the eleventh.
Okay.
And are we assuming this, I'm sorry, are we assuming that the Thanksgiving week isn't good just because it's Thanksgiving week or to?
I'm out of town. I'm out of town, but if you guys want to, want to meet, that's.
Yeah, we can if you want, but December second seems to make sense, but.
I just was wondering, okay.
Okay? Anything else? I'm going to turn it over to public comment. If there's nothing else. All right, public comment is open comment. If you have anything, it does not to be on what we talked about. It can be on what we talked about. It's entirely up to you. Three month, uh, three, three months, no longer than three months.
Three minutes.
Three minutes of behavior.
That's what people try to do.
I have a question. Um.
Carla, can you say your name for the record? So I'm going to take her.
Carla Lua, East Crafton Avenue. Um, my question is about the, the land bank. The two of you mentioned that you were kind of out of the loop. How could that happen when all of us through the grapevine hear about it? Mike, you're at several of the meetings throughout the month. This doesn't get discussed at all between commissions, the planning commission, the council.
I can give my answer to that. It's not a legal requirement of planning commission to decide on land bank.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I'm like, how did this information not come across to these two ladies on this commission?
Say, it, it came across through council.
Yeah, so, so you, yeah, we're, we're, we're not, we're not part of council. We serve at the pleasure of council. We're a recognized body that goes and works on things throughout the year. Land bank is not our valley with, there are certain things about a land bank that certainly makes sense that maybe we could be involved. Maybe not now, maybe in the future. And we are very much vested and interested in finding ways to increase the connective tissue between ourselves and council going into the year so that we have a better understanding of things that maybe they want us to be talking about and addressing. So yes, thank you for your comment.
Of course.
We don't have anything.
What, what's your, what, what do you want the planning commission to do?
I'm just wondering like, how could this happen? How, how could these two ladies not understand what was happening when Mike is a part of all of these meetings? Like, like, why doesn't things get discussed? That's my question.
Don't they get discussed here?
Yeah.
It's not like we're in an office and we work together. It's a very different environment than that. It's not like, it's not like there are meetings, we, we could have memos, someone could have sent us something like, hey FYI, you know, there's a land bank on the agenda, but that's why we want to have.
Do you have a problem with land bank?
I'm not quite convinced a land bank is a way to go, but I haven't done enough research yet. So I have, I have, I'm just asking this question right here.
Yeah.
That is my concern right now.
The question's a communication question is what you're asking. And I think we, we've answered that by saying the request has been made that we have a better communication system. This was the, there was nothing in place to do that beforehand. It relies on, we, you know, seeing it on the council agenda. And, and that's the first we see of it. And it'd be helpful to know ahead of time, even if it's not, it's germane. It's not, you know, it's not intimate to us, but it's germane. So, yeah. So I think that's the best we can do, Carla, because we're where you are. Next.
At Carrie Mitchell, uh, eighty four Southwood with, um, three things. First of all, again, uh, your, your comment about the land bank, I was thinking the exact same thing. I wasn't at the last planning commission meeting, but I went through the minutes and I'm like, how could they have worked so diligently on zoning? And this land bank, they're not even discussing it. I mean, that's what just threw me. It's like, you know, you put so much time into zoning, but then you weren't even in the loop for the land bank. So that surprised me. Um, the second thing is, uh, Eric, you'd said something about Wayne Fontana, giving money for, uh, the trails.
True.
Now, was all of that grant money?
No, the, the, the trail study, uh, was it not? Sure, was it fully granted?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was fully granted. Eighty nine, yeah.
That's great. That's great. And I just question that, you know, I'm all for the trails and the work that's being done and I agree it's going to be a great asset, but you were able to do that without putting stress on the budget.
That's right.
Whereas I don't think twenty five thousand dollars for a dog park needs to be in a budget. You know, get a grant for that, you know? Um, it's just that in the whole. Um, it's just that in the whole scheme of things.
Capital costs are different than consulting, and capital costs usually come with at least a matching portion of it. So even if that twenty-five were to be skinned back and there was something, it certainly is better than nothing. Um, this is something for more than ten years, as a resident and as a group of residents, we pushed for and tried to have, um, to get this to a point where it is implementable. Um, so you, you're absolutely right, but it does not necessarily mean that it's um, that it's a four bound conversion.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't want to use up my finger.
Thank you.
But, um, example of the council meeting, okay? At the budget, not the council meeting, at the budget meeting prior to the council meeting, they were talking about work needed done on the stage. Okay, the roof needs done on the stage. And they were like, well, should we do part of the roof? Or the problem is, should we do the whole roof, do part of it now, part of it next year? I mean, getting a roof on that stage is so much more important. Like, I, I don't understand, like, you don't want that stage to be damaged. Do you know what I mean?
Sure.
And so I, I, again, I feel like there's a miscommunication about. Where the money's being spent. And the last thing, and then I'll be done, is you had talked about pedestrian safety. Okay, again, very interesting. Somebody came to the council meeting last week that lived on Aston, okay? And the gates were open, okay now? Well, because of the construction, people are making Aston a shortcut, okay? Going very fast, and he's, he's very, he was very worried about it, okay? And, you know, there was talk of painting lines or putting signs up or or whatever. Which again, pedestrian safety, those kids spend all summer running from the park to the pool, from the park to the. Okay, they don't realize that the gates are gone. Do you know what I mean? I know it's the parents' responsibility, but along with pedestrian safety, I really think that's something that you could recommend to council to say. You know what? Again, with the park being a big asset, you know, a crosswalk, you know, a stop sign, something. You know, before somebody gets hurt.
Thank you.
Carrie, I just want you to go back to your first comment, I, about, um, you know, the, the land bank planning commission not having that discussion about it. I just, I don't want to put all the responsibility on council, because like, I could have seen the agenda and said, oh, like, there's a land bank discussion on there. And then I could have reached out and said, hey, like, can you take this off the agenda? That may or may not have happened. So I think, um, I use that as an example, did not want to bash council, I just want to, um, you know, make, make that clear. Just use it as an example of like, this is an area where we could have better communication on both, on both sides.
Yeah, these are opportunities for improvement, not, um, not complaints about. With that in mind, I see we have one comment in the room and we have one comment online, can we go to online?
Sure.
He says, head up for a while. Cody?
Do you hear us, Cody? Uh, I can hear you, can everybody hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, um, so, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, we had an update about the business development committee. Where, um, one of the members commented that, uh. I'm paraphrasing here, that Mike got a ton of realtors to show up. Um, and then later on, in the explanation said that, um, we are going to remain tight lipped about this right now. And so my question to you, as a planning commission as a whole, is, um, you know, we keep coming up with this. Uh, this word transparency, honesty, integrity. And my question to you is, how can you possibly expect for any resident sitting in this room, uh, on Zoom or in this entire community? To trust what you're doing is within the best interest of Crafton, whether you are legally obligated to reveal it or not. Uh. What, i- i- if you're not, if you're not discussing it with residents in that room, on Zoom, or throughout this community. Um, you know, it's, and, and, and if it's not a big deal, if it's something that is potentially going to happen, um, then. Uh, you know, I feel like, I feel like planning commission should be very, very transparently talk about. What realtors are you talking about? What are we talking about, building? What's the discussions that are happening? Um, and, and even if they're not happening within this planning commission, Mike, what are the discussions that you're having? Who were the realtors that you have met with? What are the plans for that? What are you discussing? What are the private, public partnerships that we're potentially going to get into here? And I don't think that anybody in this community, um, can justify, uh, trusting, uh, a scenario where statements like this are set. Thanks.
Really?
And one other tight lip thing about like the people at the, you know, someone said the realtors or something, or being tight lipped. Yeah.
Yeah, this.
Misunderstanding of what was said.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
We were, thank you.
Don't want to discount Cody's other, you know, comments, because I think that was like a separate thing.
Good comments, yeah.
Um, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, exactly, I was, because I was saying, we didn't say, just, they were, as their purview.
Right.
It's their, you know, it's their business, so.
Yes, the realtor for the shopping center, his name's Tommy. Has potential tenants that will go into the shopping center and he cannot disclose who those tenants are.
Which is perfectly reasonable.
Which is perfectly reasonable.
Yeah. Question to the room.
Uh, uh, Christian Forman. Um, so you were talking about pedestrian safety and giving incident reports. Uh, I know you mentioned that Mike should contact the police chief to get those, because they would probably have the most accurate information. Um, so I guess my question or comment is, um, I'm not from here, I haven't had to report an accident to the state or anything. So where I'm from, or where I moved from, um, you fill out a form and you send it to the state, because police usually not come out for accidents, because it's too busy. Um, so my question or comment, I guess, would be, it's probably better to get the data from the state, because they probably have more complete information. Also, if you've got other entities coming here and reporting incidents, like Ingram and Pittsburgh are close by. They come to Crafton for incidents and maybe not give it to our police department. And then also, I read that anything that doesn't involve actual injuries or under a thousand dollars damages is not reported. Does not require police to come out direct to the scene of the incident. So I'm assuming that those reports would also go directly to the state, unless they're being sent to the locality that you have the incident, I don't know. Um, so for those reasons, I would suggest making sure that if you do get data, make sure you get it from the state, because they'll most likely have. I, the most reportable information available, the police department probably has a good amount, but if you want a lot of the data.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, just a, for a clarification, I think. The state's database is entirely based on police reports, not from other sources, but I could be, I could be.
Okay, so then.
I believe it's just the state police, or the state reports, or police reports, whatever the jurisdiction is, whether it's a local community or a state police officer, whatever.
Okay.
But I think that's the, that's the source of the, of the accident system in Pennsylvania.
Okay, so then, for anything that's not, that the police don't come out to.
You wouldn't know about it.
But you still have to fill out a report at some, you know, one has to fill out any forms for that.
That's an order.
Don't come out.
An order.
I do hope annually the Crafton police come out for everything, they came out, they had a groundhog in my urban weeks. Accidentally thought that Crafton had animal control and the police came out, they were great, they helped me, but still, anyway.
It, but just.
What happened to the ground?
Yeah, it's, I think.
Kind of share that.
It's a good, an accident that's, that's reportable, is, is the police that.
Okay.
Produced a document, I'm pretty sure that's correct.
Okay, so you don't have a database of like.
There's no, yeah, there's no.
Wow, okay.
I'm dying more of them.
Okay.
But Chris, thank you for looking and for.
But do we question?
That because it's, again, it is a good question, it also helps us, helps us, like, I don't, first I've heard, not first I've heard, but I, the database thing. I mean, I didn't have a chance to look it up beforehand either, so, you know, it's good to have, be able to do that.
Uh, I might have been wrong with some things I said.
No, no, that was, no, no, that's, I, I, I know that, I'll just come back to my own personal history, work history. Uh, I was the secretary of transportation from Pennsylvania. And I recall that there was a great concern about the accuracy of those reports. And because sometimes police are very busy and they may get north and south mixed up on, on diagrams, all those kind of vagaries, you know? But I think the source was, was in fact the police department. It could be, and I've, um, I left the department in two thousand and eleven, but fourteen years passed, so unless there's something to change. That's what I recall.
Just in time, Eric, should we go to Nicole online?
Yes.
While we bring her up, I just want to add to you, the, um, when I was in council, there was a patrolman who actually walked each of the stop signs in town. And can create a report, I think that things like that, that are not police reports and not databases, anecdotes are things that can be called and communicated. And brought forth from the community and that's where this kind of thing can come from. So, yeah, it's a great, great point, but I think that multiple, multiple sources of this, anecdotes matter, right? And for people who live, um, in, in the, in the area, so, sorry about that, Nicole, your, your hands up, I didn't mean to keep weighing.
No worries, uh, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
So this is Nicole Curvin, one eighty-four South Grandview. Um, I just wanted to thank AJ for her comments about, just thoughts about, you know, who should be on which meeting. And also process related thinking about, you know, how to communicate among groups and things along those lines. Um, I really appreciate those process related questions that could ultimately, they serve to acknowledge that, you know. And I'm not saying this is happening, but they serve to acknowledge where humans, you know, would naturally have, uh, conflicting or competing interests. And how work could be divided to be efficient and, but also how communication could happen to ensure that everybody feels like they're on the same page. So I just really appreciate that line of thinking, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole, and Rihanna was the, was the, the starter on some of that, so thank you, Rihanna, too.
And the state's workshop for catalyzing, yes, indeed.
The pretend zone?
The.
Steve, you're live.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
All right, uh, this may have been covered a joint late, so I apologize, but regarding the communication between council and planning commission. Previously, we had Vince Fadella from council sitting on planning commission until he resigned. Is there any plan in the future to have a member of council take a seat with planning commission? So that there's, you know, some form, form of formal communication between the two entities? Uh, for the case of the land bank, um, you know, I would think that the, the planning commission would probably provide good input on the generation of the list of priority properties, if we are going to go that route with, you know, turning properties over to the land bank. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Chris, see if I can answer your first one. I'll go ahead, we did, we did touch on that, but I'm glad you asked. Um, and it is, it has been, there have been council members on, uh, it is not a best practice for planning commissions to have a council representative, because we report to council. So the, the, the best practice is for count, for planning commissions to be independent of, um, to not have membership on the committee. But to be able to then clearly report to council. Then part of that was we asked for the ways in which we can get clearer communication down.
I, I think like a non-voting member also would be an option.
Yeah, that's also true.
Absolutely. And I, I just want to say, as far as the land bank goes, um, that I don't think that we're precluded. Um, I don't think that we're, I don't know if we haven't been included yet. Um, but I think that there's, there's a lot of work forward in how Crafton would wrangle conceptually a land bank. And I do hope that our, our thoughts here around process, communication and interaction collaboration with council will lead to some opportunities for us to be, um, uh, useful in developing those ideas, whether they come to fruition or not. Okay? Um, other than that, um, I think we are, oh, please.
Uh, I have one suggestion.
You can state your name.
Off, Ben Gollant, two seventy West Steuben Street.
Thank you.
Uh, when we were talking about community gateways and also kind of maybe tie into business development, uh. I know a lot of people probably drive through Crafton on Steuben, perhaps putting some signs up to our circle in our business districts, uh, on Steuben would be a very.
Yes.
Good way of.
Yes.
Directing people down.
I even heard from one of the developers back when, uh, the school board was entertaining whatever it was doing. How, how, how odd it was, the developer who came through town saying, you know, thirteen thousand people streaking down. Thirteen thousand people a day drive down Steuben Street. Um, and yet there's nothing really evident on Steuben Street that you have this lovely little shopping center here. Like, forget about for a second Crafton downtown, right? The circle and whatnot, like, there was nothing pointing people into the fact that there was even a shopping center there. Versus if you go out to Monroeville Robinson, places like that, they're like, shop here now, you know, giant billboards. So, um, good point, um, well made and appreciated, yes.
You probably want to wrap up. I just, I was looking at my computer, because I knew it prepped for this meeting, I saw land banks somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
And they were in the Crafton Thrive plan. And it said, one of Crafton's, the top priorities in the next six months for both Crafton and Ingram, listed independently, was its core participating in the Tri-Club Land Mary.
Yes.
So this is not, this is something that was recommended as the original part of Thrive.
These are.
We want the record of saying that.
I will say that these are very much tenants of, not that they're edicts and decrees of what would happen. But these are recommendations that people have been working on for a decade or more, uh, we explore. Because they may have good merit, they may, CDCs were brought up at one point and it was made eminently clear from the community that maybe CDC shouldn't be brought up. Um, but there are lots of things, um, like the land bank, that, um, even if they don't go anywhere because there's not enough support, should be vetted as potential tools. You know, a mechanic that never touches a particular wrench, um, is, is a foolish mechanic if he doesn't, uh, master his or her craft. So, um, with that in mind, um, I appreciate feedback, appreciate the comments. We have a full, um, set of things to talk about for our next meeting. Um, I know that, um, there are things in terms of next year planning that you're going to say, ah, geez. Um, so, ah, geez, bring it, okay? Um, and if you want it physically on to the agenda, bring it to Mike and we'll make sure that it's on the agenda as well, okay? With that, I, any other comments? I see no hands up, none in the room, everyone's ready to go, um.
Thank you.
Yeah, we certainly, we appreciate the participation genuinely, um, very much, dear. With that in mind, a motion to a chair. Second, all in favor? Thank you, guys.